Please stand for the pledge. This time, I'd like to introduce Stuart Bailey. Stuart, would you like to come up to the podium? Stuart is a member of our Lackawanna County Veterans Affairs Office and does a fabulous job on behalf of all of our veterans, our servicemen and servicewomen. Retired from the Army Veteran, he fought in the Korea War, serving in tours in Germany. Stuart held the rank of SP4, serving as a field wireman. He was awarded the Soldier of the Year Medal in Berlin in the past. Commander of the VFW Post 769 at Clark Summit. Stuart, thank you for your service. Would you like to step right up to the podium, right there? Stuart, thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Everyone, please rise, place your hand over your heart, face the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please remain standing? I'd like to have a moment of silence for Sam Strahan. He was a student at Freeman High School in Freeman, Washington. He was a sophomore and he lost his life when a gunman came in and shot several other students. But Mr. Strahan did not survive and we just want to keep his family and his friends in our thoughts and prayers. And this shouldn't be, ever become something that's normal. This isn't normal. This shouldn't happen. There shouldn't be shootings in our streets and people shouldn't die needlessly. And this poor Strahan family will have an empty spot at their table forever and this just should never happen. It's just a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, September 20th, 2017 Board of Commissioners a meeting to order, 10:00 AM, the Commissioners' Conference Room. I'd like to make a motion for the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a second? Roll call.
Commissioner Notariani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. We're going to go right into proclamation presentation, 17-0246, proclamation presentation declaring September 2017 is Global Pulmonary Fibrosis Month in Lackawanna County. Do we have anyone from the society? Would you like to come up and we'll...
Get right to the podium.
Go right to the podium. So talk to us a little bit about the foundation and what's going on.
Mr. O'Malley, what's the first thing you do in the morning when you get up?
Take a deep breath and get out of bed and brush my teeth.
Thank God, you're one of the few that have answered that that way. Pulmonary fibrosis is a silent senior citizen killer disease. It has one specific strand that is called audiopathic pulmonary fibrosis. It inhibits your ability to breathe. There are 50,000 newly diagnosed cases of this every year. Forty-two to 48,000 die of this disease. And this disease is an irreversible lung disease. And as you know, lung disease is the third leading, has the third leading mortality rate in the United States, behind cancer, heart, and stroke. Unfortunately, those, as myself, suffering it, there is no cure, there isn't any prevention. Nothing is being done, other than the pharmaceutical companies reaping benefits from coming up with two treatments, which only offer 6% to 8% improvement in your ability to breathe. And both of those cost the diagnosed patient $94,000 a year for one and $96,000 a year for the other. Now, this disease primarily strikes the 40 to 80 age group. Now, the vast majority of the people who are stricken with this disease are primarily looking to live their lives based upon Social Security. How can they afford $94,000 or $96,000 a year? Physically impossible. Many of them don't, they may take the free offer from the two pharmaceutical companies, but that free offer will only go for a 30 or a 90-day period. After that, it's out of pocket. So, what pulmonary fibrosis does, your lungs have an awful lot of activity going in them. The activity is normally, Mr. Notariani, you would like this, it's called alveoli, not ravioli, avioli. And this avioli contains the air sacs. Each lung has 45 million air sacs. And what happens, the fibrosis, which means the fibrosis in the lungs becomes thicker and it prohibits the ability of the lungs to transfer oxygen to the needed organs in your body, mainly the brain and the heart. There is an awful lot of research being done, but this research is in the scattered, there isn't any one group who has their arms around their research to direct the research. You have research in genetics, satins, blood supply, and trying to come up with a fix, they call it. But what happens is that the way we're going about this, it may be 2050 by the time that they come out with something. So what happens between now and 2050? Several pharmaceutical companies become richer and those having pulmonary fibrosis becoming poorer. To me, that is an absolute fatal, non-essential relationship. Something has to be done. And the biggest thing is that people don't know what this is. They're not aware, there's very little public awareness nor, or education of pulmonary fibrosis. And what happens is that, once it's detected, and the means of becoming detected, you could go one and a half to three years before you may go to a pulmonologist who says, "I want you to have a lung biopsy." And that lung biopsy, they would send to the lab naturally and determine, "Do you have pulmonary fibrosis or IPF, audiopathic pulmonary fibrosis?" Takes that long. There's nothing being done to improve the research in the detection methods, the diagnosis methods, to effectively deal with this disease. And it can be environmental, it could be because of smoking, both the smoker and secondhand smoke. And it could be due to, people don't realize it, farmers, farmers are a great candidate for this because of the dust that they produce in, whether they're growing hay or something of that nature in their crops. And Dunmore used to have RCA and Thompson where they produced picture tubes. Picture tubes, as well as Luzern County, RCA became GE, became Harris, and they produced semiconductors. Both of these electronics industries had what they call dry gas and chemicals in their production. And those, if not properly controlled, and the equipment that utilized them not properly controlled, produce, even though they're in an enclosed environment, produce problems for this disease. I'm the one who dubbed IPF as being a silent killer disease. And now pulmonary fibrosis is using that as one of their monarchs. And it's important. They set back in 2001 to go ahead and identify a month as Pulmonary Fibrosis Month. And that matured and has become now Worldwide, Global Pulmonary Fibrosis Awareness and Education Month. And they have identified September as being now that. You may want to say, "Well, don't we have agencies here like the American Lung Association or the ATS and the Red Cross," or not Red Cross, but the National Lung Association. National Lung Association has an office in Marywood College. Try calling it. Nobody sits there. You have an office and a phone and an answering machine. The American Lung Association is the same thing. The closest, whether it be even for pulmonary fibrosis, which they wanted me to become an advocate and develop an office here. At my age, I'm beyond that. We don't have any organizations, our group in Lackawanna or Luzern County, northeastern Pennsylvania. The closest we have is an office in Allentown or an office in Johnson City, New York. I met my wits' end. I appreciate the last three years, you guys have been great. I received the Lackawanna County Commissioners' Proclamation from you. I have sent that, pictures of it. Fran has been very nice to me, sent me pictures through the email so that I can forward them to pulmonary fibrosis. In their newsletter, Lackawanna County has been gotten recognition. I thank you, Fran, for that. I don't know what else to do. I have, we have three major computer programs and organizations. One, remember I said that this is a worldwide disease. One has 64,000 members, okay? It's worldwide. I communicate with people in Australia, Italy, Great Britain, Puerto Rico, Amsterdam, just to name a few, almost in New Zealand, almost every other day. And there's another group which has 2,000, and that is mainly primarily in the U.S., but I would say half of those people are from the state of Texas. So we have one big, huge problem. As you know, Lackawanna County, just look around the room, okay? Lackawanna County is very heavily occupied by people in the 50 to 80 age group. When you go to church in the morning and you sit in the back of the church, what do you see? You see gray hairs, bald heads. Notice that the next time you go to mass. And that's an indication of the county that we live in. And that is not any reflection on the county commissioners. It's just a reflection of the times. And the reflection of the times, we must have awareness and education of this disease and control of the research. I have asked that for the real writers, next year's ballgame, if they could bring in Bernie Williams, an ex-Yankee All-Star, who has, I think he has five World Series rings. His father died of pulmonary fibrosis. It would be great to bring him in and for our county, get the notoriety. Jerry Lewis, even though many people think of multiple sclerosis, Jerry Lewis actually had, before he died, back in 1991, he was diagnosed as having pulmonary fibrosis. Many people don't realize that. And my guess is what happened, he died supposedly of congestive heart failure. That congestive heart failure was, in my mind, produced by the lack of the proper blood supply to his heart, which was affected by his lungs.
Commissioner Cummings?
Well, now, your work with the, did you start the foundation?
No. The foundation was started back in 1996.
Okay.
It was on a small scale. And then there was a well-to-do, wealthy person who died of this in 2003. And then what happened was, between 2001 and 2003, he had set up the foundation.
Okay. Well, I am going to have a lot more to say in my remarks at the end of our meeting, but I do appreciate that you're continuing this work as a nurse and as a smoker. I understand the implications and the problems that come with this diagnosis, along with many others. The medication costs are outrageous. And, you know, we saw this with the EpiPen. For, it's not the same area or realm, however, the EpiPen was never $300 prior to, I think, 2012 or 2013 it came out, where they increased, the pharmaceuticals increased that cost. I mean, that's an epinephrine pen that people depend on for their life if they're bitten by, stung by a bee, any allergies they have, if they have a peanut allergy and somehow there was some kind of peanut oil in the food that they ate and they didn't know it. And for people to not be able to afford a medication like that is promoting their possible death because they won't pay for that medication. There's no way that you can pay $300 for an EpiPen and if you use it consistently. So I understand your plight, but $94,000 a year is quite outrageous and, you know, I think that something has to be done. So hopefully, we'll be able to address this and with your work, it'll be addressed in our local papers and news so that we can try and do something about that. We're only a commission, we really can't do much, but spread the word.
Every little bit helps.
So I thank you for fighting the fight and continuing it. And like I said, I'll have more to say at the end of our meeting. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Commissioner Notariani?
I was totally unaware of this disease until today. My mother is in the hospital right now and she's got breathing treatments, her light COPD among other things.
COPD is, is, is one of the, pulmonary fibrosis is what they call a member of the interstitial lung disease category, as is COPD.
Okay.
COPD also, excuse me for interrupting, but COPD also, there's a strain of COPD that is, they just can't find out the reason for it. A lot of people think, "Smoke, smoke, smoke."
Right.
It's not the only reason.
I think one of the things that Commissioner Cummings was able to do when we first got here was to educate, me at least, probably Commissioner O'Malley too, in how drug companies do things in a different way. That's not a world I live in. I'm not involved in the medical field. You know, the only, only thing I know is that, you know, I'm very grateful, I'm never sick. And I'm one of those old people that sit in church, but I'm not bald and I don't have gray hair. But...
Thank God.
But, that being said, you know, anything we can do to help promote this, we certainly will. I think part of what happened was, is that maybe it's time to, you know, again, address the pharmaceutical companies and try to make them more responsible for their actions. They're making lots of money and people are suffering and it's not correct and that's part of it. How the whole thing started with the, with the current lawsuit by Lackawanna County was, two months ago, my wife and I were out at dinner with Todd O'Malley and his wife and he talked about a law firm that he's, and Todd's been doing this stuff a long time where they get involved in these class action suits. Todd's is involved nationally. He was the president of the American Trial Lawyers Association in, you know, New Orleans, we'd be in Chicago and we'd be in Los Angeles, and he would know these large law firms that have the resources to do this kind of stuff. And then I would not have had any idea what he was talking about, about the addiction and the drug companies intentionally doing that to people if it weren't for the education that Commissioner Cummings has given me during the course of the last year and a half on that. To me, it was, you know, it was what you do, you take pills. I, you know, I don't take them. I take them to leave every couple of days, but that's, but it's because of things like that that we're able to go forward and do something like this. Maybe there's something that can be done for the same, for the lung situation. Again, I'm not, it's not something I understand really well. I'm glad to try to be helpful in any way I possibly can and I want to thank you for coming in and bringing it to everyone's awareness and making me more aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I have one more thing that I would like to add. For the last three years, I have given a civic presentation on this at the Dunmore Senior Center in September. I will be giving one on the 29th at 10:30. And I would like to invite everybody who is interested to attend it. I was going to have one, present one this year with the aid of a pulmonologist, my pulmonologist. Only problem is that I found out Sunday that he is not able to make it. He will be out of town that date and we can't find a supporting pulmonologist in the area. We'll handle it. I'm trying to get the pulmonologist involved. They are like when Bob Bolus was in the Marines, going over the hill, okay? Bob Bolus was a sergeant directing the traffic. The pulmonologist is the one who directs the traffic properly for pulmonary fibrosis. Right?
I'd like to thank you for coming in. It seems like you're one-man gang, actually, but I'm sure there's more people in Lackawanna County that are involved, is there?
That's one of my problems, as I mentioned earlier. Lackawanna County does not have any support groups that I know in dealing with lung disease, whether it be pulmonary fibrosis, pulmonary hypertension, COPD, asthma, you know...
I think what you may want to do is maybe this, if the paper writes about this, maybe there's going to be some spinoff and you might want to give a phone number, maybe you could have a meeting, set up a meeting, try to get people involved. The other thing is if you're going to be having this event at 10:30 on the...
29th.
29th, up at the Senior Center, which is on Monroe Avenue in Dunmore.
Yes.
You might want to, maybe we could see if we can get ECTV, that's Mark McGlorry right over there with the camera, to come in and video it so maybe you can get a little bit more information out there, some phone numbers, some ways to get some contacts, to start developing some kind of board, some kind of committee, some kind of organization. Because it only takes one person to make something happen. And it sounds like you really have a lot, you have a lot inside of your heart and you want to push this forward. Your one little meeting could get out to 40,000 people through Electric City TV. So that's something we could try to work on with you to try to help.
I would appreciate it.
Sure.
I failed in that regard. At the first meeting that I had, the first civic presentation, I had Julie Sedoni at Channel 16 there. Well, Julie got a call and she was in a hurry to go and I probably had about five seconds of airtime. People, if they, as Lauren just took a cup of coffee, a sip of coffee, if they did, they missed it.
Yeah.
I sent a Facebook message to Mark Hiller of WYU, his Health Beat program. No answer. That's the problem.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
The people who can really help us don't understand it. And I'm so thankful that the Lackawanna County Commissioners do understand it and are trying to help. I appreciate everything that you do.
We'll try to help you with your meeting coming up. Okay, we have a proclamation here. Whereas Pulmonary Fibrosis Foundation recognizes the Global Pulmonary Fibrosis Awareness Month each September. It is a campaign to increase worldwide awareness in pulmonary fibrosis and the devastating, relentless progressive disease that causes scarring in the lungs and generally fatal within two to three years of diagnosis. Whereas in 2000, brothers Albert Rose and Michael Rosenwig, PhDs, founded the Pulmonary Fibrosis Foundation. The brothers experienced firsthand the devastating effect of pulmonary fibrosis with their sister Claire, who passed away from the disease. Both brothers were diagnosed with it and their vision and their dedication was led by the creation of the foundation. Whereas pulmonary fibrosis affects over 200,000 Americans and results in more than 40,000 deaths annually. And that's scary because, you know, just to take a breath, all of us take it for granted just to take a breath, but it's really, you know, I mean, people are thinking of each breath and most of us don't have to ever think about a breath, it's just automatic. One diagnosed patient dies every 13 minutes. While there is no cure, research is underway. Pulmonary Fibrosis Foundation has launched a national registry that tracks data from more than 1,300 patients across the country. Together, we can make a difference in spreading awareness, providing support, increasing essential research and funding, and ultimately finding a cure, which we'll try to help you with. Whereas, the month of September is dedicated to helping the community focus on doing something and eradicating pulmonary fibrosis while also directing resources critical to those living with the disease. We urge residents of Lackawanna County to assist in raising awareness, raising awareness and funding. Now, therefore, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry Notarian, and Lorraine A. Cummings, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby and acknowledge, proclaim September 2017 as Global Pulmonary Fibrosis Awareness Month on behalf of the 214,000 citizens in Lackawanna County. Congratulations. Come on up to the desk.
Thank you.
John, you want to see where Lorraine is? Bob, you're sir. Bob, here, sir. Talk to Mark after the meeting, okay?
Thanks, Jerry.
We can get your...
I went to the... I was waiting for Lorraine once I could ask her. I used to be on my mother's... He did good. It was a good event, I'm telling you right now. It was a win-win. He did well in the field, he threw it all. It was a nice thing. Well, they had like 10 people. He was well in the field. Was he? Ah, no, he actually... Indeed, it was all worth it. I wouldn't say nothing bad about it, because I mean...
Thank you for coming in. Okay, 17-0247, Commissioner Cummings.
Small Business Spotlight is for Roll Call, and I believe we have Joe Harris. Tom and Joe Harris?
Joe. Tom, would you like to come up to the microphone right there?
So tell us a little bit about what you do and how long you've been doing it and why you started.
Well, first, I'd like to thank Commissioners Notariani O'Malley and Commissioner Cummings for having us here today. When we got a call from Fran to be here, we were more than honored. So, thank you very much.
I'm going to diddle that.
Talk a little bit about your business and what's going on, where you're at, and the phone number and all the good stuff.
Okay. Excuse me. Roll Call established in 2008 down in Duryea. My father and I started this, like I said, in 2008. During this time, I was a police officer with the city of Scranton. I just recently retired this year after 15 years to go with the company full-time, and what we did in May of, May 20th of this year was we moved our business from Luzerne County to Lackawanna County, just off of North Kaiser Avenue on Hudson Street. What Roll Call was and what it turned into was a great change. We started off in, with about 3,000 square feet of business space, expanded three times in Duryea to about 6,000 square feet. We are currently now in a 27,000-square-foot facility. We started off just as a sportsman and predominantly law enforcement suppliers. What we did with the new location is we started, of course, we were doing the retail end of it, and that expanded, but we also put in a live-fire shooting range. Now, with the live-fire shooting range, we have departments all over the area come to use it, along with sportsmen. It's a nice, safe way to, you know, engage in the sport of shooting. Everything is bulletproof, bulletproof dividers, you only, you almost go into like your own little bubble while you're shooting. Also with Roll Call, along with the shooting range, which, what I think most people find most fascinating is the training center that we now have. We have an indoor training house, it's a simunition house, and what we do with that is we're able to teach civilians safe firearms handling, firearm safety in the home, but more so than that is now we actually have a place for law enforcement to come and train. Roll Call receives no compensation for the utilization of the facility. They come down, we have SWAT teams, police departments, a lot of the prisons have been using the training facility, and it does have a classroom, and the actual training house, it's hard to imagine, but it's a large structure, and then inside that structure is a training house with an instructor's observation deck to watch movements throughout the house for training purposes. Now, what Tom and I realized is that we were fortunate enough to get a building that had that square footage, we were able to add this in, and what I realized that, I was blessed working for the Scranton Police Department, I got to go to some of the best training that the country had to offer, but unfortunately, a lot of our law enforcement didn't have that same opportunity in the area, so now we're trying to bring that here to Lackawanna County, and it's working great. I'm getting calls all the time for departments from all over the county, even outside the county, to utilize the facility, which we're really excited about. So that's a little bit about what we are and what we do. It's kind of a three-part system. We also have our e-commerce, our e-commerce store, which is www-rollcall911.com, and so it's almost like a four-part system. We got the range, the retail, the e-commerce, and of course, the training center.
Well, that's great, and did you give your number? Did I miss the phone number to get in touch with you?
Oh, yeah. The phone number is 570-451-GUNS, G-U-N-S, but you could also find us, like I said, on our... or, I'm sorry, 496. You could also find us at our, on our website at rollcall911.com, or like us on Facebook.
And you offer retail sales on firearms?
Yes, ma'am. We do retail sales on firearms, and then we also do, for the first-time home buyer, or, excuse me, the first-time gun buyer, we also have training classes that we offer to...
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Oh, that's great. I'll have to, I need a handgun, so...
Perfect.
If anybody reads the papers today, they know why. Yeah, I mean, I've target practiced with firearms, and, you know, it was hard for me to find an area to do that around here, and that was about seven years ago when I first started target shooting as a sport. And I appreciate the fact that you're in business here in Scranton locally, and I will definitely be visiting your company.
Thank you.
I appreciate the work you did, and I thank you for your service as a law enforcement officer, and for helping our security forces to help us remain secure and allow us to keep our freedoms here in America, because that's exactly what police officers and our law enforcement do. So, thank you. Thank you for all your work, and thank you for keeping our ability to own firearms, and I support you 1,000 percent. So, good luck with the future endeavor, and I'm glad you're here in Scranton where it's close. I didn't even know you were in Duryea, which is probably closer than Scranton for me, but I'm hoping that you do very well here, and I will make sure that I continually spread your message around if you can leave some information for me.
Thank you so much for that, Commissioner.
You're welcome, and thank you for taking the endeavor on a small business that truly matters for our region, for our protections, our safety and security and our freedoms. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Notariani?
First off, thanks for moving to Lackawanna County. It's where you belong. But I was there for your grand opening, I've been there a few times. It is a great facility. Commissioner Cummings, I've mentioned to you about going up there.
I didn't know it was them. I'm going to have to go, yeah.
Yes.
Well, I, you know, those .38s, they hurt my hand, I need a different gun.
The training facility is beyond great. You, there's a deck above so that someone can explain to them, an instructor, what they're doing and what procedures they should follow.
Yeah.
It's a great facility. They're, the classroom, when I was there, the one evening, you know, there's 20 people in there, and they have an instructor that's explaining things, they just do a great job, and it's really a wonderful place, and if you want to go some afternoon, we'll take a ride up.
Yeah, I think we should have a Commissioners Day over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's make a big to-do out of it.
Yeah, and Commissioner Notariani, I do have to note that he could breach a door. Anybody that's curious to know what that means, it's a, what SWAT teams use, it's a big, heavy, it's kind of what I explained when I used to do our show and tells for the elementary school, or, excuse me, yeah, for the elementary schools. So I'd ask the children, I'd be there with the SWAT team, and I'd say to everybody, "Know what your parent has a key to the house." And then I would pick up the big ram, and I'd say, "Well, this is our key," and they didn't really get it, so the next question was, "When is the K-9 getting here?" So... But it was nice to see Mr. Attorney, Commissioner Notariani breached the door, it was a job well done.
Thanks.
I know Joe, when you first started, Joe started as a corrections officer at Lackawanna County Prison for about a year, about a year, Joe?
Two years, part-time.
Two years, part-time.
Yes.
And then you got called up to be a Scranton Police Officer. Joe, you spent, like I said, you had two years Lackawanna County, and then you had 15 years in the Scranton Police Department. You know, I, we talk about law enforcement all the time. Law enforcement has become our first line against terrorism. The job has changed tremendously.
Locally, too.
I mean, even when you just first started, you know, I mean, it changed from that moment on.
Yeah.
I mean, police work was police work, it was all stuff that happened in the community. Now we're concerned about what's coming from overseas, and, you know, I mean, who to look out for and what to watch for, and it's just different. But thank you for your service and your 15 years, but, you know, you worked for 15 years, and you grew your dream alongside of it, over 15 years, to a point where you had to leave your first love to go to your dream business.
Yeah.
So...
As you know, I could never totally let go.
No, I know you're still here.
Currently with the...
The deputies, he's one of our county deputies as a part-time.
Unit.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. I knew it wouldn't be long. I think I was retired for about three weeks, and then I went back to law enforcement part-time.
It's good for you to stay involved. And also, it's really nice that your father, your brother, you know, the three of you run the business, you brought it into Lackawanna County, which Commissioner Terry brought up, that's great, it's great for our tax base, it's great to have another business in Lackawanna County, you know, and it's good to have somewhere where people, you can learn about firearms, you know, and the safety and everything else, because it really matters, and understand where to put your guns in your house, you have children, and, you know, I mean, everything that goes with it. And congratulations on your business. We're just happy you came in, but...
Thanks for having us here today.
Commissioner Cummings?
So today, we offer a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Roll Call LLC in honor of achieving the designation of a Small Business Spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this 20th day of September 2017 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Notariani, and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come on up.
Thank you.
So you breached the door.
Yes, you did, yeah.
I don't want to shake your sleeve, but thank you so much, I'm going to shake your sleeve too, because I'm sick.
Oh, okay. Joe, so much to you, but you want me...
There you go.
You're going to have to turn around.
Okay.
There you go. This is your certificate.
You guys, everybody looking at me? One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, we're all smiling, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Joe, we did go to the...
I know, listen, we're going to have to...
That was very nice of you guys, thank you so much.
Oh, you know, Jesse told me.
Didn't he tell you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Tracy went with me.
Oh, you went?
She was riding, yeah.
You guys are going to come back up, right?
Yeah, well, definitely, yeah.
Thank you so much. I absolutely will, because I'm truly...
Thanks.
I have a good one, I'm going to go.
That's for us, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, yeah.
We have training, we have everything.
I have arthritis here, and the 38 is too big to kick back.
Kevin wouldn't get on the horse.
Yeah, he had bings, so I'm really bad, so...
Really? No, he wouldn't get on the horse, he came with us, but he would.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Cheers.
It's a lot of fun.
It is fun.
That was so nice of you, thank you very much.
You know, we're not talking about shooting, we're talking, we went up to the... You know, it proves, it really proves the point that small businesses can grow into a bigger, bigger business, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the Harris family. Thank you very much for coming out, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Okay, Chief of Staff?
Yeah, at this time, I have two public announcements to make. The first is in regard to an executive session meeting was held by the county commissioners on September 13th in the county conference room here to discuss a possible litigation issue. Present at that meeting were Chairman Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Notariani, Commissioner Lorraine Cummings, Solicitor John Brazil, Solicitor for Litigation Don Frederickson, Solicitor John Sarah, Chief of Staff, myself, and Tracy Hart, along with Attorneys Todd O'Malley and Attorney Joe Capelli, and we will have a further explanation this morning. As you'll see on our agenda, we'll be ratifying agreement, and Solicitor John Brazil will be explaining that, but by law, we do have to read into the public record when we've had a session on litigation, and that was that. Secondly, I announced at the last county commissioners' meeting that at this meeting, we would be announcing a schedule of public reassessment, public input hearings, and we're ready today to release that schedule. On Wednesday, October 4th, at the county commissioners' meeting here in the morning at 10 o'clock in this room, we will be releasing the video for the first time. Following that, we will be holding five hearings. The first one will be at 3:00 PM in the Oilforge Borough Building on Wednesday, October 4th. The second one will be in the North Pocono High School that evening at 6:00 PM on October 4th. The following day, on Thursday, October 5th, we will hold one at noon in Scranton City Hall and Council Chambers, followed by a public input hearing at 3:00 PM in Dixon City Borough Building, and that evening will be the final one at 6:00 PM in the Abingdon Knights High School. And what we did, we tried to geographically do these across Lackawanna County, so every area of the county would be represented. At these meetings, we will be releasing an approximate 10-minute video, and the person that helped us produce the video will be there to answer any questions on the reassessment process. These meetings are going to be held strictly on process and questions for the public. The commissioners will, to the best of my knowledge, will be invited to attend these, but they will not be actively participating in these meetings unless they choose to. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Wallace. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only? Okay, John, how are you?
Long time no see.
Yeah.
You smoke? Stop. For shame. Hang your head in shame.
That's not like my mother, what she'd say.
Save that comment for the end, because you'll hear what I've said. Okay. Joan Hodawan, it's 220 Linden Street. Resolution 17-0242. I trust you're going to explain the genesis and background for this, but one, a couple questions. One, what is the relationship between O'Malley and Langen Law Offices and Mark J. Byrne and Partners? It says, I saw on the back of the cover sheet was from O'Malley and Langen, and then the actual document is from Mark J. Byrne and Partners?
Well...
Two different organizations?
We'll answer under Commissioner's comment.
Okay. And also, if not now, when you address this resolution, if you could explain the genesis for this, I was kind of surprised, I missed the story in the paper a couple of days ago, but why do we need opioid litigation and a separate law firm to represent the county with regards to it?
We'll answer that, too.
Okay. And the second one, on Resolution 17-0245, the loan with WNAP, that made me very happy, because I think that the county and the city never have enough positive publicity, and sometimes we ought to toot our own horn. And I think it's very important that we continue to celebrate the area's history, and this time, it's, you know, our railroad history. But I hope that that display will stay at the Trolley Museum for many years to come, and that the public gets to enjoy it. So, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Joan.
Stop.
Okay. 17-0244?
This is...
Oh, okay.
Marie Schumacher, 1799 East Mountain Road, Scranton. On the agenda items, the first one is the report just given by the Chief of Staff. On the agenda for these meetings, if this 10-minute film is going to be shown, I would like to know that. I would like to know if there's going to be representatives, and if so, who they are to present the pro and con side. And I don't, I'd like to get back to a pension board hearing at City Hall, so I'm not sure I'll be here for the answers, but I'll look forward to reading them in the paper tomorrow, if not. But my primary reason for being here is 17-0242. When I picked up the paper that morning at 5:45, it had the potential for ruining my entire day, because it reinforced my, fear is not the right word, but I'll use it, that the tentacles of government know no bounds. I do not think that this legislation is in the average pay of citizen of the county. and a separate law firm to represent the county with regards to it?
Well, we'll answer that, too.
Okay. And the second one, on Resolution 17-0245, the loan with WNEP, that made me very happy because I think that the county and the city never have enough positive publicity, and sometimes we ought to toot our own horn. And I think it's very important that we continue to celebrate the area's history, and this time it's, you know, our railroad history. But I hope that that display will stay at the Trolley Museum for many years to come and that the public gets to enjoy it. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks, John.
Stop.
Okay. 17-0244?
This is...
Oh, okay.
Marie Schumacher, 1799 East Mountain Road, Scranton. On the agenda items, the first one is the report just given by the Chief of Staff. On the agenda for these meetings, if this 10-minute film is going to be shown, I would like to know that. I would like to know if there's going to be representatives, and if so, who they are to present the pro and con side. And I don't, I'd like to get back to a pension board hearing at City Hall, so I'm not sure I'll be here for the answers, but I'll look forward to reading them in the paper tomorrow, if not. But my primary reason for being here is 17-0242. When I picked up the paper that morning at 5:45, it had the potential for ruining my entire day because it reinforced my fear, is not the right word, but I'll use it, that the tentacles of government know no bounds. I do not think that this legislation is in the average pay of citizen of the county. And it begs many questions. If you're going to go after the drug manufacturers, why not go, people who make alcoholic beverages, why not go after the FDA? They approved it.
I am.
All of this, so, you know, they're bigger than you. I know the answer, you know?
Doesn't stop me.
That's what everybody does, you know? If you're bigger than the next guy, you can do anything you want to them because other people don't want to spend their life savings, even if they believe they're right sometimes. So I understand why you're not going after the FDA. But whatever happened to personal responsibility? I mean, when I go to a doctor, and if he prescribes medication for me, I ask him about it. I read, actually, as boring as they are, the materials that come with the drug when I do get it filled, if I decide to get it filled. Also, yeah, we brought nicotine, what about nicotine? Why don't you sue the, I mean, we've already done that, the state's already done that. They've misused under, particularly under, I think, Rendell, I believe it was. He stopped using the proceeds from the litigation for the purposes to which they were attended. And again, who fights it? Nobody, because why? Government's too big. That's why. I would like to know the county expenses, the total, that you are trying to recover through this litigation. I'm sorry that, also to have learned during the Chief of Staff's presentation that you have already voted on this in private, so anything we say is old news. I think there are many things that you could spend your time on that would improve or benefit the average citizen and resident of this county than what you're doing. And again, I am not a fan of big government, and I am very saddened. I think people should use their own personal responsibility. I don't like the news about the opioids, but, you know, it is what it is. There are lots of things. You take a cigarette, somebody else takes a drink, and, you know, there's lots of things. And picking out this one is poor. And I do not have any drug companies in my profile, so, thank you.
Thank you. I hope you stay until you can hear my explanation, Marie.
Okay, 17-0244?
This is approving our current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. The Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 249460 through 250430 inclusive, totaling Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $7,604,029.29. And Representatives from the County Controller's Office, Reggie Marianni and Jermaine Helkowsky are here if there are any questions on these.
Everything good?
Yeah, and Gary did address us before he left, so...
I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Tariani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 17-0240?
This is ratifying an electric service agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby ratify a consolation new energy electric supply agreement, and I'd be happy to provide a brief explanation on this to the Board of Commissioners. We have a company that oversees the energy conservation for us on these issues, and we currently are paying 7.419 cents a kilowatt hour throughout our county buildings. Under a proposal they're making to us in a change of rates, we could lock something in at 6.764 cents a kilowatt hour over the next two years and save $105,000. I actually, this was a very timely thing, and there was a time lapse on when we had to do it. I signed it, the document, on behalf of the county, and I'm asking the board to consider ratification of the agreement today to save the county $105,000.
Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion ratifying, ratifying an electric supply agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Tariani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 17-0241?
Approving an Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Service Provider and Professional Contracts for fiscal year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. And our county's Director of Human Services, Mr. William Browning, is here to discuss and explain these agreements to the Board of Commissioners.
Morning, Commissioners. These are beginning-year contracts for an array of services that we provide through the provider and professional network, including placement services, counseling services, translation services, legal services, IT services, as well as supporting our successful arts program.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Browning?
There's some programs that I'm not in favor of. I'm going to be supporting this, but I want to make sure that I keep an eye on some of the programs that are being taught. So, Bill, you know what some of those areas are. If you can make sure that you keep in touch with me and let me know what the programs that are coming through, and so I can get a chance to look at them before they're brought out to the public. I would greatly appreciate that.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving the Office of Youth and Family Services Provider Professional Contracts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Tariani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Bill. Thanks for coming in.
Tracy, I just want to make sure that that's in the record.
17-0242?
This is ratifying a litigation proposal. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby ratify the pharmaceutical litigation proposal for Mark J. Byrne and Partners LLP. And our Solicitor, John Brazil, will explain how we came to this agreement, what the parameters are, and what the potential recovery is for Lackawanna County, as well as how we're going to conduct a forensic audit to determine what our costs are.
Commissioner, would I may...
Thank you, Solicitor.
We sat in at the meeting with Mark Byrne relative to this lawsuit on the opioid, and I would just make one com... I'm sorry. And I would just make one comment as to one of the comments of member from the audience that this should be about personal choice. In fact, this lawsuit is exactly about the lack of personal choice because of the fraud on the opioid companies failing to inform the public as to the highly addictive quality of these drugs when they first came out. So that's the entire nature of the lawsuit, that people did not have a personal choice in this matter because doctors were, facts were misrepresented to doctors and also to the public as to how highly addictive these drugs were.
That's exactly correct.
And relative to the cost in this county, I think since 2014, over 200 people have died from opioid or...
231.
Opioid-related. It is serious, and I think this is one of the most important things these county commissioners, you county commissioners can be dealing with, because this is going to have long-term impacts. I've talked to Mr. Browning, and he is in the process of trying to get together some figures, but the law firm will bring in a forensic accountant to actually do a determinant. He will go back many years to determine our cost, which you know our costs are enormous when you think about our drug court, when you think about the prison, when you think about the Human Service Department, when you think about Children and Youth Services, the cost is just enormous in this matter. In this matter, the county commissioners were diligent enough to find a law firm that charged a 25%, which is, in my opinion, below normal, but most importantly for the county commissioners, if this law firm is not successful, there will be no obligation on Lackawanna County and its taxpayers. In many of these suits, the person suing is responsible for cost regardless. This law firm has agreed that if they are not successful, we will not bear any cost. So based upon that, the county commissioners indicated this was something that they were very supportive of, and I would recommend it. It's a great contract, and it's a great cause.
It would be unaffordable for the county to be able to take on the drug companies. This is something that actually Commissioner Cummings brought up probably half a year ago, eight months ago, that maybe we could go after them. It was impossible. Where this all started was I started to look at different law practices to see who was going to actually, that we could go towards. There's people from California who are charged at 40%. This is going on in numerous other states. We got lucky. Actually, Todd O'Malley reached out to me, and I found out that they were actually, that he had a law firm. And Mark Byrne is the big law practice. Todd is a person that's just an individual who's just involved with bringing it to our attention and actually is like a coal party to it now. But it's Mark Byrne and Associates that's going to, Attorneys in Law, that are going to be actually doing this. We could not afford this. This would be millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars. And not one person in Lackawanna County who's lost a family member could afford to do something like this. The other thing is what people got to understand, when you smoke, you walk in the store and you buy a pack of cigarettes, you light that cigarette, you walk into a bar, you buy yourself a beer, you drink that beer. You go to your doctor, he writes you out a script.
That's right.
You take it for granted that this is okay, I could take this for 30 days. Well, let me tell you something. When you're taking like OxyContin, Oxykodone, stuff like that, and this is my corrections officer experience talking here, after 30 days or 60 days, you're addicted, you could be addicted to this if you're not understanding exactly what's going on with you, and you're wondering why the pain isn't going away, but you need more pills. And then all of a sudden, the doctor one day says to you, "Well, I'm sorry, you can't get any more scripts." So now all of a sudden, you really need them. So now you try to go to another doctor, and that doctor may give you a couple of scripts. And that goes on, you maybe get a year or two out of this. Well, all of a sudden, now you're on the street. Those pills are $85 to $100. It all depends on what you're looking for. All of a sudden, you're running out of money, so then the drug dealer says one day to you, "Well, you know what heroin is? It's only $5. Five bucks." So all of a sudden, you're on heroin, and then all of a sudden, everything starts to crash completely. I saw it at the jail. This affects everybody. Every family in Lackawanna County knows someone who's dealt with someone that had this. Everybody has known someone or gone to a funeral for somebody that it's happened to. This isn't even, even if you just talk about adults, this isn't even an adult situation. Young boy who's a freshman in high school hurts his knee, well, all of a sudden, he's on a painkiller. Well, once the painkillers are up, he's addicted. Now, he's trying to figure out where he can get this stuff on the street. This goes across the board. You know, you go to your doctor because you trust them and you expect them to do what's right. Well, the doctors were taught that the pharmaceutical companies were giving them the right drug to help his patients, so he's trying to do what's right. The problem is, is the medication was too powerful for the individuals, and they were taking too much of it. And like you said, two or three scripts, you could be addicted. Depends on your personality, but a lot of people have died this way. I've gone to way too many funerals. I've seen way closer than I'd like to mention people that I know who have died from overdoses. And it's horrible, and it's a lot of young people, and it's a lot of older people, and it's like eight to 80. It's amazing. The obituaries are amazing. All you have to do is read, and you could start picking up on who's this and who's that. We took a chance. We decided as a Board of Commissioners that we were going to reach out. Well, I was reaching out, reaching out. Well, finally, we came to a point where we got a person who was doing it for 25%, no cost to the county, for the burden on our prisons, probation, children, youth services, you name the department, Veterans Affairs, the courts, everything. They could do a forensic audit and see where this money's at and see if we could recoup some of it, because it did cost the taxpayers of Lackawanna County millions and millions and millions of dollars, not to speak of all of our municipalities, what all of our law enforcement that have an extra problem on the street because they're dealing with people that are high. It's not easy. Law enforcement's not easy, and this is a horrible issue, and I think that this was one of the best things that this Board of Commissioners has done because it matters, and it's killing young people, and it's killing citizens in general in our county. And there was no way we were going to stand by and let it happen. So we did it, and we're going to ratify this today, and hopefully next week, this will be locked in in the courts. So, Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, I can't reiterate what you just said more. However, I can go into further explanation with Marie because I too am for small government and personal responsibility. You know me. But when I first ran into this problem back in 2011, I was blaming the physicians. Why are you prescribing these medications? And I was going after them, and I got a lot of pushback because they were telling me that they had to go by what they were told through JCO and pain management requirements. And if they didn't meet the burden of pain for some of these people, they lose reimbursement. So the doctors were being put in the middle of this. The hospitals were being put in the middle of this. The clinics were being put in the middle of this. In 1990, there was Purdue Pharmaceutical and, I forget the other name, but they did a huge marketing campaign, Marie. And what happened was they effectively made our government believe that we were not treating pain effectively in America and especially our veterans. Okay, so let's start, if you go and look this up, look up with the Veterans Administration. And I know we can't do commentary back and forth, so let me finish because I want to make sure I get this point correct.
Thank you, George.
What happened was they had the description of vital signs changed, okay? So vital signs are your blood pressure, your pulse, your temperature, and your respirations. That was what they were prior to Big Pharma getting in bed with big government, which I agree, the FDA should have never done this, and neither should our Department of Health and Human Services. Changed the description of a vital sign and added pain to the category. Once they did that, they brought out these pain scales, and doctors, hospitals, clinicians were required to meet mandatory satisfaction survey results, and if they didn't, like I said, they were losing funding. Not only did that happen, but then another point I try and make is that when I was a nurse, I was taught these medications weren't given unless you were dying or you had a treatment, you have an end-of-life diagnosis like cancer or in hospice. We were afraid to touch morphine. We didn't even want to touch the bottles. We had liquid. We used to use liquid morphine, and we weren't even, I mean, we were afraid to touch this medication. I mean, it was, it was, yes, I was. You're not a nurse, I'm a nurse. I'm telling you, I was. So now, what happened was with this change and this requirement by the federal government and JCO, who's not a government agency, all those regulations went into Medicare, Medicaid, these are requirements that have to be made. So that's what they were looking at, and then the people that were being trained in the medical community are no longer afraid of this medication and are actually providing it first. So when I was in nursing school, it was a standing order of you start with Tylenol, you move up to extra strength Tylenol, you move up to Motrin. If that didn't work, it was usually Darvocet or call the MD for further orders. Now, because of the change in the vital sign description, they start at the top. They start with the opioid. That's what these doctors were being trained and these nurses were being trained. That was verified on my trip to Washington, DC, and that's when I decided that I felt that the best recourse was to go after pharmaceutical companies, and they had informed me out there that there was already people that had. Then I, for the research, they were actually targeting lower-income areas in West Virginia. I mean, in my meeting in Moosik, I discussed all the pain meds that were sold there, and this area was actually targeted. And they won that law, or no, they did hold off on that lawsuit because they settled. But it's outrageous what's happening, and I do not believe in, you know, big government, but I also don't believe in Big Pharma, and I think they've way overstepped their bounds. As a nurse, I'm appalled. Physicians have been held in a lockbox, hospitals have been also, and they're finally fighting back. And I'm hoping that our local schools are, that are teaching, our medical community are going to change their patterns as well, because this is something that is a manufactured crisis, in my opinion. And as a nurse, I feel that personal responsibility is kind of thrown out the window here because, like Commissioner Cummings said, when you smoke or you drink, you choose to go into the store and buy that product. But when people are sick and in pain and hurting, and they go to their physician, and their physician provides a medication, they trust that physician. And the biggest question when I was walking around fighting this in 2011 and 2012 was, "The doctor wouldn't give me something that would hurt me. I trust my doctor." And you should be able to trust your doctor. But like we say with the health care bill, once you bring government in to a service industry, that's when you run into problems like this, and they don't belong in the health care field, period. This belongs in the private sector, in the doctor's hands and the patient's hands, because once regulations come down, this is the result, and it's costing us a fortune. So yes, the government does have to be held accountable as well. And I said that in Washington, and I will be saying that in Washington again this week, and I appreciate you coming in. I agree with a lot of what you said. And I appreciate you coming in. I agree with a lot of what you said. I mean, we are on the same page there. But there is a different aspect to this that you're not understanding. And I deal with it every day. And unless you were dealing with it, I, I'm sorry, but you just don't understand the, the part that I'm looking at. I mean, we have people dying, elderly are addicted to it. In nursing homes, they're buzzers. I mean, you could go in there and ask a nurse. Every four hours, that buzzer's going. It's on time and on target. Because they just cannot handle the fact that this medication hasn't given, been given to them. And they know when it's due. They know when it's due. They start getting agitated. They start getting antsy. They can't sit still. It's an addictive, it's an addictive pill. Pharmaceutical companies misrepresented it. They didn't give any studies, but they said they had studies and, and they, they, they made, they made people feel embarrassed in the medical community and the government in order to get all this accomplished. And they did a very good job of it, and this is the result. And, and young people, as you know, are putting pills in bowls and just picking them up out of the bowl. And it's, it's something that we as educators also, that's the other aspect of what I'm working on now, is education and personal responsibility. That's why I have the kids doing this video. Because they have to recognize that they can question doctors. People don't always think they can. They don't have, they're not strong. They, they, I'm sorry, they're, they're taught to respect their, their physicians. And they go in and they're hurting and they need help. That's all they know. And you have to look at that aspect as well. So thank you. And I'm sorry, and I was gonna address all this later. But I, I, I am, never in my wildest dreams did I think that I would accomplish what we've done here today. When I went to Washington and, and you all heard the video and what happened there, and I found out that everything I was saying was correct, I was furious. And for my fellow commissioners to join me in this fight in such a great manner, I greatly appreciate it. And I am not backing down on this one. This is one that I will not stop fighting forever. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
No, I think it's been pretty well spoken and pretty well conversed. And it, it is what it is. They, they misrepresented what they were doing.
They did.
Should go after them. The reason for that law firm is because they have the resources to do that. We just need to go forward and bring it to a vote. Go on.
Thank you. You know, all of us up here, we're, we're commissioners on the Board of Commissioners. And but all of us are parents up here, and I really mean it. This headline speaks volume. County takes on drug companies. And you know what? We did it because nobody else was able to. And we are actually supposed, we're supposedly the first county in the Commonwealth to take on the drug companies. Because there's a lot of good people dying in our community, and there's a lot of people that are addicted. And I'm gonna throw out one last thing. Four out of five heroin addicts were on painkillers to start. That's very scary. Okay, I'd like to make a motion ratifying litigation proposal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem. Seventeen dash zero two four five.
This is ratifying a loan agreement. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby ratify a loan agreement with WNEP Channel Sixteen LLC for this week tonight, train set for this permanent display at the Trolley Museum of Lackawanna County.
This, this is, I think this is really good opportunity for all of us. They got wind of our backyard train on WNEP, News Watch Sixteen, Talk Back and all this stuff. And the John Oliver Show, actually, I'm not sure if anybody had an opportunity to see it. Sixteen-foot by eighteen-foot train with all the landmarks that make Lackawanna County great. And there was other people that actually wanted, I'm not gonna get into their names, but we wanted it too. And it's gonna be kept at the Trolley Museum, and it's gonna probably be on display, hopefully within the next week, week and a half, there'll be some kind of major unveiling. But I'm just happy that the John Oliver Show picked Lackawanna County Trolley Museum to have it at. I think it's gonna be a great asset, and it's gonna be great for the children to come out and everyone to see it, so.
Commissioner, I did, I did sign the agreement because Channel Sixteen had required it before they gave us the train. So that's the reason we're ratifying it today, is approving the agreement. So I'm asking for your permission to ratify the agreement that was signed on behalf of Lackawanna County.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
No.
Commissioner Cummings?
I'd just like to thank the John Oliver Show and I think it was one of their directors or one of their, their individuals is actually from Lackawanna County who had, was a big proponent of having the train made and everything else. So I'd just like to thank the John Oliver Show. It's gonna be great at the Trolley Museum. I'd like to make a motion ratifying a loan agreement.
A second.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board.
Commissioner O'Terriani has a medical appointment he has to attend, so he has to excuse himself at this time.
Sure.
Morning Commissioners, Bob Wallace-Scranton.
Morning.
First off, I think we all in this community have to applaud you as far as the drug use goes. It's an epidemic, and it's been swept under the rug far too long. We in this industry, in the transportation industry especially, experience it a lot. And, you know, it's way, way out of control. And it's affected everybody, from children to adults. And for you guys to stand up and do what you're doing. Now, every resolve starts, a fire starts with a spark. And you are the spark that I hope we see major resolves in this drug use. Because everywhere you go, they just wanted, just walk into CVS or Rite Aid and just look at the stacks and stacks of drugs being pushed out the door every day. And stop and think of what the consequences are of all those drugs going out there. After your pain is gone, you're still on the drugs. And then you have a different pain, a different mental attitude, and it goes on. Which brings me to the PTSD. We missed the last Commissioners' meeting unfortunately because of the hurricane in Florida. Getting flights and everything out of there were almost impossible. So I've asked Tracy to reschedule us. If it's for next week, I could have Dr. Lindefelt here, Lou Barlet and some of the other people that were going to attend this that I think are critical in getting the message out on PTSD, excuse me, from Lackawanna County, just as we're doing with the drugs. I believe they work hand in hand. People on PTSD are using the drugs. So it's just a whole domino effect. And it starts here. And I couldn't be prouder to say that I wanna be part of this. And the people we're bringing in can't wait to be here to see where we're going. Because they're finally getting to meet people who believe, and not just politically, but believe truly in the epidemic we're facing. When you see a young guy, a young woman kill herself over a PTSD, well, we know there's treatment out there and it's ignored. So I'm happy to be able to be able to do what we're doing. A while back, I brought up on Eighty-One North, between the Central Scranton Expressway and Drinkard Street. Somebody's gotta send Mr. May a letter and tell him to do something with that stretch of the road. It's like driving on a washboard. And maybe he could look at that rather than telling us how great his circles are following the airplanes on the road and everything else that we do down there. You go around there, you're actually dizzy before you figure out where the hell you're going. So maybe he could look on a straight line on Eighty-One going north, and maybe he could do something on that, you know?
I couldn't agree more, bud.
Well, it's factual. I mean, we go through there a lot. I mean, don't take a tractor trailer through there. Watch these poor guys coming with trucks. It scares the heck out of you because they don't even know where they're going. And we as residents know where the hell we're going. You know, we get confused there. Should we follow the airplane or follow the bus on the road? Which one are we gonna follow here, you know? And what's he gonna do when it snows? He's gonna have a little lantern showing us which way to go, like Paul Revere? I mean, it's the most asinine thing I've ever seen done in the state is this roundabout. You know, an engineer should know a straight line is the shortest distance between two points. I don't know where these engineers came from, but they must've got lost somewhere in a circle or on a merry-go-round because they haven't figured out how to go straight. Yeah. One of the issues I had was with the prison, I know we're gonna have a prison board meeting, but I'm asking the Commissioners to take up the fight to see that you can get a container of milk in the jail and pillows. You know, one of the things that has been my pet peeve, and I've been fighting it, I was at a hearing the other day over social security benefits being taken from an inmate. When you're incarcerated, you lose your social security benefits. And you never get them back for the time you're incarcerated. That money goes into a black hole. Yet the inmate in there has to figure out where he's gonna get money for the commissary, where he's gonna get money to pay for medical, where he's gonna get the money to pay some of the expenses he has on the outside, which he loses. So when they walk out of the jail, what do they have? They have zero. And the government's taking their money.
Well, I usually don't get involved in this part. I usually wait for Commissioners' new business, but I wanna bring your attention. With us looking for the next food provider for the prison, we're gonna try to make sure that we get milk, okay? So I just wanna leave.
And pillows.
Well, we're with milk.
That's not part of the food contract.
No, it's not part of the food contract.
Pillows aren't part of the food contract.
Pillows are more important when you wanna sleep.
Commissioner O'Malley insisted that we make that one of the...
If you want, if you break a bone, you know, we don't wanna...
I'd have Pat present the first pillow. What the heck, you know? He'll put a smile on everybody's face, including the guards. They don't have to deal with irate people who can't sleep at night. One of my little pet peeves, and I'm gonna get to the real reason why I really came today though, is the school strikes. Mountain is more disturbing from the business side than to see a school strike come. Our employees don't show up. Trucks don't move. Businesses don't have people to come in, stock their shelves because they gotta stay home and watch their kids. While these people walk up and down the road, I consider them radical terrorists. Because we're dealing with a terrorist group in a sense, because they're making demands against people, like holding a gun to our heads. You know, if you got an issue, arbitrate it, but get your butts back in the classroom, do what you need to do. But don't take it out on the people that you want us to continue. All our taxes, as you well know in the county, are all for school tax. We're paying all this money to you people, and you want more and more, and you wanna start giving less and less. It's my feeling that the companies and the employees that have lost the days paid because of these strikes should actually sue the school unions for going out on strike, what they're costing. Let them pay back the losses these people are suffering. A housewife, a single mom, she has nowhere to go. She has to sit home and watch her kids today while they're walking up and down the street wanting more, 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 and she's struggling to pay her bills. She doesn't even know if she could get health insurance, yet they're making these demands. You know, they gotta understand, there's other people that are being affected majorly by their actions. Go back in your classrooms, do what you were doing, do what you were supposed to do, what you were hired to do, and that's teach the kids. And take the burden off the people in this county. It's time for us all to put an end to this nonsense. Have binding arbitration. Sit there, fight, battle for whatever you think you're entitled to. But the people out here you're hurting are gonna be the ones that are gonna make a lot of choices that you may not even have jobs. Because if the people stop paying their taxes, no matter what they do with a tax sale or where they go, you're not gonna have the money to run your school districts, just like Scranton. They're broke. Why? Because we're paying more and more and more and getting less and less out of it, and they're hurting the people. But more importantly, you're hurting the kids you progress to teach. This is what you profess to do. You came as teachers, be teachers. You're setting a hell of an example for the kids of tomorrow.
Mr. Ball, if I could just say something, I don't wanna interrupt anyone, but I do have to make an announcement that we have a publicly scheduled prison board meeting at the prison at twelve o'clock. We're usually very cognizant. We let everybody speak as long as they want. But I have to ask the speakers today if they can limit themselves to five minutes. We'd really be appreciative.
I'm right at the end here.
Thank you. I knew you'd understand. I'm sorry, but we had to do it.
No, that's okay. You could apologize. And Pat will accept it. Not a problem. What we have here Friday, and this is a message to all the first responders. I have been selected from the American Towman. We have what they call the Spirit Ride. And what it is, it's a coffin that's being transported all over the United States by all the towing companies. It goes from one towing company to the next towing company. Friday, I'm the recipient of the coffin in downtown Scranton, right in front of the courthouse, where it'll be turned over to us. And there'll be a huge motorcade. The mayor has already agreed to shut Washington Avenue down for us because we're gonna have numerous tow trucks, first responders, and all, the chief, the fire department, the state police are all involved in this. And then we're gonna have a motorcade leaving downtown Scranton where we'll have already transferred the coffin from Yocum's Towing coming from Allentown in their motorcade to us downtown Scranton, to one of my rollbacks, which will be escorted by my heavy wreckers and a parade of all the other tow trucks, first responders, all the way down Eighty-One into Hazelton, and then back up to here where we'll take it up north and turn it over to Duschnick's Towing, where David's son was killed, as we all know, a year ago by a tractor trailer on Eighty-One. So David'll get the coffin from us sometime Friday evening when we get there. And then he has another thing going on Saturday in memory of his son, and then they're moving the coffin to another group of towers. So I'd like to give this, and this is an invite for the Commissioners and anyone here that wants to attend. It'll be right out in front of the courthouse. And the mayor will be there. He's doing...
Around what time, Bob?
It's supposed to be for three o'clock, but we're starting like at one o'clock when people are gonna start showing up because they're coming from all over the place. So we have Washington Avenue from City Hall down past the courthouse till five o'clock. But by the time we stage everybody, we're asking literally every police department in the area to show up, all the fire departments to show up. Because the most important thing being a first responder, and I've been in it fifty-five years. I've lost five heavy wreckers on the interstate that have been hit by vehicles, plus light duty equipment out of our locations, and we had seven locations around the state. Many towing companies are hit. State police are hit. Local patrols are hit, ambulances are hit by people who don't understand the word "move over" when you see flashing lights. They just come flying down the road. And when you're doing a recovery, like we do on the side of the interstate, especially a heavy recovery, and we have to leave one lane open, we got people flying by at sixty, seventy miles an hour, and your butt's right on the white line. And our equipment is there. They're texting, they're on their cell phones, or they're just totally distracted, and they run into you. And it's a hell of a feeling to hear the screeching sounds and somebody coming at you, and you don't know where to run to. We've been there. And I've been two-time medal recipient of the American Towman for my heroic actions on the interstate and saving lives. And I also received one from the Florida Highway Patrol. So I'm very familiar what it is and why it is, and that's why I was selected here in Scranton. And I'm asking the Commissioners, I know the mayor's gonna be there, he's doing a presentation from the city. And all first responders, this is about you, not just about me and all of towing guys out there, but it's about everybody that responds to an incident on a highway. It's your lives that we're trying to bring the attention to. I'm asking them all to show up here. Friday, you could get here at twelve, one o'clock, and start lining up, and we'll make things happen.
It's about safety.
It's all about lives, Pat. More than safety. It's all about lives.
Yep, saving lives and, yeah.
We've been there and seen it. When you see the carnage on the highway because some idiot didn't pay attention when he saw flashing lights and just ran into somebody. It's a hell of a thing to see where you have to pull a body out of a crash or somebody critically injured because of ignorance. And this is what this is all about. And I'll leave this with you so you could take a look.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you there. And I, I was real quick, too.
We have a prison board meeting at noon, so.
I know.
At the prison.
I know.
I'll try to be quicker. I am sorry that you believe I don't understand. I do understand that we have a serious epidemic. Where we disagree is who's responsible? I mean, if anything, Ms. Cummings, you reinforced government is the problem.
Yep.
They, FDA? Then you tell me that it's government regulation. How many, how many resolutions have this, have this body sent to our legislators and the president on changing, taking pain out of the vital signs?
I've done it.
It's, you know... It's, you know, is it headlines we're interested in, or is it, is it getting to the root of the problem? This is just absolutely crazy. Again, who has to teach? What are we teaching our kids? Government has to teach them, because your parents can't tell you that, well, you have a right to ask your doctor. Parents sit with their children for a good number of years before they're on their own. They can lead by example. No, government has to do it. Government has to do everything. It's a, you know, this is, this thing that really bugs me is this revolving thing. Government creates the problem, government solves it. Government creates the problem, government solves it. Just gets bigger and bigger. What we need is more local kinds of control. And you'll be hearing more on that from me, from my Bring Them Home project that I'm planning to start. And I just, I think this is a big mistake, and I would also like to know who is going to pay for this forensic audit? If this law firm is paying for it? If not, if it's the county...
I'll answer it under my business.
If it's, if there's, if it's the county, I hope there's a ceiling on it. If you're going way, reaching way, way back, and I would also...
Everything's free. We said that already.
I would also say that going back, that's what I thought, I want verification, thank you. I think I am entitled to that. And I think, you know, there's other things you could, you could add to the list. Why not the technologist who came up with cellphones? Look at the, what that's doing to people, too. Killing kids, killing a lot of people. This is just, boggles my mind that you are increasing government and, and just, if it's solved, it's solved. But it's not gonna be solved by government, I guarantee you that.
No, I agree. I think it's gonna be solved by the public, being educated on the fact that this was done to them to begin with. Because as a nurse, I didn't even know about it. Until I started reaching out to doctors and blaming them for the epidemic. That's when I found out. So the public, if I didn't even know, and, I mean, the public's certainly not gonna know.
Anyone else?
Okay. Commissioner Cummings?
Okay, so with the opioid lawsuit, I agree, Marie, and I think that because government got involved intertwined with Big Pharma, that's where our problem came in, and it shouldn't have ever happened, and hopefully we'll be able to stop it. And it's the same exact reason why I don't believe the government should have anything to do with our healthcare system. Because when they do, they screw it up all the time. They need to get out. We need it repealed. Done. It needs to be gone. So I'm trying, and I will be out in Washington on Friday, fighting this at the federal level as well. I have not just left it at the local level. I'm going, I've gone out to Washington for NACO, National Association of County Organizations, and I brought it to the panel that was there. And they confirmed that it is a fact, that this happened at both the government and pharmaceutical levels. And there are groups out there fighting, and I belong to them, to remove pain as the fifth vital sign. You can find them online, and there is a fight out there at the federal level, just so you're aware. This isn't the only fight we're on. It has to be tackled. I'm hitting every area and aspect I can, because I've seen the devastation of this, and I've felt it in my own family. So in regards to, so I, I mean, I agree. Anything else you can offer to me to help me, I would certainly be willing to do if you have another area. Because I think if we talk about it together, and your ideas and all of our ideas, we can work together to solve the crisis together rather than fight about what the best solution is. I think if we all work as a team, we can get it done. And with that said, I am going to be starting, you know, I have had to leave this, this meeting how many times to go out and cough, okay? And I do smoke, okay? These are my cigarettes. I've smoked since I'm 11 years old. I'm suffering repercussions as we speak right now. I've had a cold for over three and a half weeks, I'd miss our last meeting. And I have finally decided that I am going to attempt to kick the habit of smoking. And I have reached out to Michelle Smith of Pennsylvania A H E C.
You don't need these, right? Okay, good. Here, I'll...
No, no.
I can sell them on these, I can sell these on the... Okay, now we know that's over.
No.
So we're starting right now, huh?
No, 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 I'm not starting right now, so don't you crush my cigarettes.
Tracy's trying to take... Well, this was a personal choice of mine that I made, and it was a bad choice. It was due to, you know, being chastised by my fellow friends about how I wasn't cool, you know? So anyway, after, people always ask me, if there was one thing in your life that you could change, what would you do? And I always say I would not, I would have not smoked. Because that is probably the worst decision I've ever made in my entire life. Yeah, and it's very expensive. Now, I have tried on numerous occasions to do this, but I figured as a county commissioner, I should serve an example for other people, for one. For two, hopefully with the pressure of being a county commissioner and in the public eye, you will embarrass me to the point of no return. And three, I will be able to count on another group's help to help me through this, because it's not going to be easy. And four, my fellow commissioners will have to put up with me along with the public once I do make this decision, so watch out. I'm not nice when I'm not smoking. So apparently, the way this works, I'm going to actually ask the county, we apparently had this, where we had a signup sheet for people to quit throughout the county for our employees. So that's something I'm gonna be working out in the future. And Marie did bring up a point about the cigarette manufacturers, and right now, Michelle can't start this program with me right now because of the fact that the government misused and abused the funding for, you know, applying the cigarette money to roads and bridges and things like that where it didn't belong. So the cigarette manufacturers are fighting back, and that's what the holdup is on the funding for that right now. So once that's straightened out, so I have a reprieve a couple of weeks until that's straightened out. So once that funding comes through, we're all gonna work together to try and help a lot of people quit, along with myself. So the next subject, I just have one more subject I wanted to bring up. You know, we had two gentlemen in here that started this business for, where are they? Roll Call? And that is, you know, I always say, we all have a First Amendment right, freedom of speech, religion, and, and, you know, I always say our Second Amendment protects our First Amendment right. I appreciate and applaud, you know, the work they've done in regards to training civilians, and I'm going to take them up on that offer as well. But there is something happening in our community that I am not happy about. There are, there is this, these signs going up across the county. Hate has no home here. The messages are, hate has no here, project seeks to declare neighborhood residents, businesses, and places of community free from hate speech and behavior, providing safe places for conversation, work, learning, and living. Hate speech is protected by the Supreme Court and the law of the land, our First Amendment rights, although I don't like hate speech, I don't condone hate speech. It is protected. And this is one of the things that is creating such divisive, divisive issues in our community and across our country. It implies that someone else does hate in our county. And it's, I would ask that they change their message. I think it's a terrible message. I think that it needs to stop. And I want to bring attention to a rally that just happened for President Trump out in Washington in support of him. And Black Lives Matter showed up to the rally, and we're all prepared to do the typical bashing and, and, you know, beating, as has happened across our country in the past couple of months. But what happened was the people that are speaking in favor of President Trump invited Black Lives Matter to the stage to allow them two minutes to provide their message. And you can see this video on YouTube. It was an amazing, amazing sight. The gentleman that was organizing Black Lives Matter stood at the podium, gave his message. Some messages that he stated were cheered on by the crowd, others were booed. At the end, both speakers shook hands and had further discussions, and that's the way to handle America today and our issues. To sit down and discuss, as you've seen happen on this board with my fellow commissioners and myself. Something has happened here that's never happened before. And we work together as a team, we disagree on a lot of issues, but we're getting things done in our county. And I applaud those, the organizer of Black Lives Matter and the organizers of the Trump rally in Washington, who stood there and allowed each other to have a voice. Because the only way you can solve issues is if you're discussing them. And shutting down speech is not the appropriate way to do it. And I would hope that these signs go away. Thank you.
You know, our addiction problem is never about headlines. Our addiction problem is about people dying, and that's just the way it's always been. And like I said, in my experience of being a corrections officer for 17 years, I've seen the worst of it. I've seen people come in and withdraw from heroin, alcohol, cocaine, you name the drug, I've seen it. It's the worst sight you've ever seen in your lives. And I'll tell you what, this board of commissioners, I'm very proud of, and it took a lot, it was a lot of hard work involved in this, to find a law firm that was gonna do our, our court case for 25%. There was, there's no one out there like that. They're usually 40, sometimes 50, 30%. It took a long time to find it. And everything that goes with the case itself is gonna be paid for. Forensic audits, everything else. Because that is concerning. That could cost a lot of money if we had to really look back really far. They're taking care of all that, and that's part of their 25%. But this is about lives. This is about making sure that our young people don't die. And the families that are losing young people out here, their hearts are broken, and it's really sad. And like I said before, you know, you go to your doctor and you get a script, you believe in what the doctor's saying, and then you get another script, and all of a sudden you could be addicted. And that's what scares me. And it's a lot of young people, and a lot of them are under the age of 18 because they had surgeries, and it scares the heck out of me. So I'm very proud of what we did. We are the first county in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to do this, and I implore all other counties in the Commonwealth to do the same exact thing. Because I know that this is an epidemic, and it's not only across the Commonwealth, it's across our country, and it's very, very scary to all of us. Last night, we had the Gildan AAA National Championship Game at PNC Field, home of the 2016 Government Cup and Gildan Cup Champions Rail Riders. It was a great night. It's very rare that you have an opportunity to be able to have this in your community. We'll probably, next time we see this, maybe 30 years from now. But all the people that are involved in the AAA baseball were so impressed with what we did in Lackawanna County last night. The fanfare, the opportunity, the fun, the grandparents, the children, that they're hopefully in the future gonna be bringing All-Star Games to our community. That was some of the things that I was hearing last night. It was just a great showing of what Lackawanna County has for all of the Lackawanna County citizens. Plus, all the people who came in. We had people who came in as far as California, outside the country even. I mean, that filled up all of our hotels, restaurants, gas stations, you name it. What a great impact. A lot of these people came in for three days. Durham, who won the, won the game, actually, they stayed in from when they beat the rail riders. So they stayed in that hole the rest of the week. It's a great impact on our community. And there was just some great pictures in the paper today, and I think this is great. Because it really shows what the fan experience was about. I mean, they had zip lines, they had opportunities for children, young and old, to enjoy. And just a great game, great fireworks, and a great display of how great Lackawanna County is. And there's great things happening in Lackawanna County. I know sometimes it's not brought up, and it should be. It really should be. Because, you know, if you're coming to talk about something bad, talk about something that's good. Because Lackawanna County has a lot of great things going on every single day. And I love being part of Lackawanna County, and I really enjoy being the chairman of the Board of Commissioners. And here's the front page. We had a championship game here, and like I said, the way this works, it's like a rotation from each one of these fields. So probably the next time we'd see it, it'll be like 30 some years from now. But hopefully, our impact with the AAA division will actually bring in other games, old-timer games and All-Stars, and other opportunities to draw more people to Lackawanna County, because it really matters. And it's just a great economic impact. I'd also just like to bring up that we're gonna be having a senior health fair on September 22nd. That's gonna be at PNC Field. So if you haven't been up to the field, you're gonna get a chance to see where the rail riders work out and where they, where they play. And it's gonna be from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. So please come on out. We're gonna have flu shots and lots of giveaways, and there'll be lots of things to enjoy. Also, we're gonna be on September 23rd, we're gonna be having a fishing derby at Merle Sinowski Park. That's gonna be 11 to 1 p.m. I think you have to get there around 10 o'clock for registration. Real enjoyable time, free hot dogs, orange drinks, and it's just nice for the kids. It'll be a great day. September 27th, the Board of Commissioners is gonna be having a blood drive at our Future Government Center at the Globe, and that's gonna be 11 to 4 p.m. You know, with all of our hurricanes and different things that tornadoes have happened lately across our country and floods, you know, we need more blood for the Red Cross. And so anybody who's come out, please come out and give blood, because you're giving life. And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll Call?
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.